Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate.
If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mstaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Comes to insurance, Winterburr &amp; Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburrinsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate.
If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mstaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Comes to insurance, Winterburr &amp; Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburrinsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate.
If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mstaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also...
Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the September 4th regular board meeting. We are in the Rackley Educational Building, and it is 5:30. We will have the roll call. Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumner.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am here. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the prayer and the pledge. You can bow our heads. Father, we thank you yet again to do your will. We humbly ask for your guidance. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, under the consent agenda, the approval of the August 5th board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? First recognition of employees in this new school year. We've got a month under us. Mr. Patrick Gilbert is here with First National Bank. Let's give out some money.
Yes, let's do that. Dr. Mayor Chairman, first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to continue to do this. Dr. Beard, Mr. Chairman, it's our honor to recognize the teachers and the staff members that helped to make our school system great. So I appreciate your involvement. And first, we'd like to recognize Charlie Smith with the transportation. Okay, no worries. Okay, next is Ms. Katie Farr from Southside Elementary. Okay, and last but not least is Jeremy and Jeremy James from Giles County High School. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
I'll pass up the photo op if you...
Thank y'all once again. I do appreciate it and appreciate the partnership. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Huge thank you to First National Bank. They do this every month for us during the school year, and it's a wonderful recognition of our outstanding teachers and support staff. Thank you guys so much. Employee student recognition. We have some artwork here from Southside. This would be Coach Ogeron's class. Let me say it.
All right, I'm presenting tonight on behalf of Mr. Ogeron. He's out of town on his soccer tournament. So he has eight students that he's selected artwork for that he's got showcased here on the wall, and several students had obligations tonight, practiced his games, siblings' games, and so forth. But I have two young ladies here who are able to make it. You ladies stand for me. I have worked... Come on, go, we should... They've worked really hard with Mr. Ogeron. He does classes with all of our students, and they work on the basics of art and use what they learn with him, as well as their personal creativity, to create some masterpieces. And they're going to continue working on it this year, and they'll be showcasing some work at the Giles Art Showcase in May. So we're looking forward to seeing that. And thanks again, ladies, for being here.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you. Just sat near that.
He goes, "Stand up point to one."
Thank you, ladies. And yes, and feel free to leave or stay. It gets interesting.
That might be an oversell.
Oversell. My bad. My bad. Great artwork. Next up on our new business, we have a election of officers. It's in the policy that the first September when we come back, that's when we take care of these duties. We assign new officers each year for the current school year. Today, we will be electing our chair, vice chair, and our TLN representative. Since chair is first on this list, we will open the floor to nominations.
Nominate Knox Vanderpool.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any other nominations?
Make a motion that the nomination cease.
Thank you. Any objections? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, what if I'm myself? Any opposed? All right, wonderful. Thank you, board.
Not opposed.
They're not opposed, my dear. Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Thank you all. Thank you for the continued reassurance. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to vice chair. Open the floor to nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mary McLeod.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any other nominations? Motion to cease nominations.
Motion to cease.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Next is, open the floor for TLN representative.
Nominate Richie Brewer.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any other nominations?
Motion to cease nomination.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Brewer, for stepping in and getting legislative with us. Wonderful. And I know that Ms. McLeod is a good mentor to that as well. Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
May I ask you your how-to?
How-to.
I'll still show up to the delegate assembly. No worries. We get three. We get three, so.
Well, you guys have been effective in there, too. Moving on in new business, we have some field trip requests here.
Motion to combine B through F.
Seconded.
And O.
O, please.
O.
And O, yes.
That's right. O was brought in. Good, good point. B through F, including O, that are all the field trips. Made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Next up, we have a batch of disposition of assets.
Motion to combine G through L.
Seconded.
Made and seconded to combine G through L. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those disposition of assets, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? On to item N, online safety hub and demo site. If you remember from the work session, this is a no-cost opportunity to partner with LineWise for parent information on our district website. Just a good information tool.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Item N is the director's contract. We do need to take some action on this tonight. We can go ahead and do it without doing a special call or anything along those lines because we are in a board meeting. If we want to pursue with putting the renewal or the purposes of the contract out for the director, we need to add that to probably our website and our agenda for October, so we need to get ahead of that for the 15-day notice. So the action tonight would be to go ahead and add that to the October agenda, which would be the October 2nd board meeting agenda.
Do we need a motion for that? I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to add the director's contract to the October 2nd board meeting and to allow it to already be publicized to meet our deadlines. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? O has been approved. We are at item P, 2026 insurance premiums. This one, too, we can make a decision on this now since we are in the board meeting. No need for a special call. We got some more information. We know that this came in, and we've had a couple, a few delays on it, but trying to get all of our data together, various different ways to look at these premiums with what we've seen with the increase. Mrs. Woodard gave us some information, I believe it was yesterday. The very rough estimate is it's an additional $170,328 to support our teachers for their insurance premiums and the increase to support them through the end of this school year, and that's for general ed. That's for 141. 142 is part of federal dollars. That's $15,000, $16 to complete this year. And then 143 is cafeteria. They're self-supportive, but for them to absorb and help with those additional costs, it's $9,432. So that's what this paperwork and that folder with all the insurance premiums kind of bases it out to. So realistically, looking at just over $185,000 between 141 and 142 to help absorb those insurance premiums. Dr. Beard, do you want to add to that because I know you did get on the phone with Shayna since you and I last speak, didn't you?
Yes, sir. The concern is whether the IDEA, the federal funding for special ed, can accommodate that. I have spoken with Mrs. Muntz, and I think we're okay in the title, but we're not going to be okay in the federal realm for special ed. And this is still based on 24, 25 information. We will not have accurate information for this school year. It's based on information that our employees are... The insurance our employees are taking. I'll get that in just a second. That will come out Friday about midnight, and then payroll will, of course, be next week. So that's what we're looking at right now. So that's why she said this is a very rough estimate and trying to find what she said about the other.
So why this is time-sensitive is we have to let the insurance carrier know our direction. Is that correct?
No, we need to know what we're doing, what we're going to be able to do, so that our employees will know. If the board decides... Open enrollment begins October 1st and runs through the 29th, I think.
31st.
31st, because that's on a Friday, isn't it? It'll be October 1st through October 31st. If we're absorbing the costs, that may make someone change their... Like you have limited, you have standard, you have open access, all those things. It may make a person change. If we're making... If we're allowing them to pay that increase, then that may make them change from a standard or a PPO to an open access because they may not want to pay that increase in the premium. So we need to decide what we're going to do because we would need to do, one, a budget amendment, but Ms. Woodard said that we would not have to do that tonight. We just need to decide what we're going to do as far as absorbing, splitting, or allowing the employee to absorb the cost. So that's the reason we need to do that. But keep in mind, if we absorb this, this does become part of our budgeted expenses, and it would be taking from fund balance going forward. Because each year we increase what we contribute, that has to be a budgeted item going forward. If there's an increase again, which likely there will be next year, it may be that the board can't afford to do that, and it would have to fall on the employees. Because Ms. Woodard said that there would be approximately $125,000 coming from our fund balance right now if you decide to absorb the costs.
125 or 185?
She said 125, didn't she?
125 was our special ed recurring expenditures. If we're just taking those numbers.
That's right.
So Dr. Beard is referring to another expenditure that we just kind of moved recurring when we had to pull from fund balance last month and move that $125,819 to allow for those positions that we had to fill due to the income, new incoming need of special ed students, and that is a recurring expense. Right now, our fund balance, when you consider all assigned expenditures and future expenses, if you think about our bond payment, if you think about that special ed expense and other things that we know we're on the hook for, if you will, our current fund balance is $6.755 million. So that's a little bit kind of lower, I think, than where we're sitting here. Again, we moved money over in our maintenance of effort, and so we were expecting to be around here, but we need to consider, you know, if we were to say we wanted to absorb all of this cost through this school year, and we know that's $185,000, $190,000 on insurance premiums. We know that there's another $125,819, the special ed recurring expenditures that we're going to see going forward for our next budget cycle. We're seeing some numbers rise. Also, we should be discussing our bus purchases next month and planning ahead for those. You know, we have purchased 14 buses over the last three years. Part of the reason why that number seems high, 14, is that year where we didn't get all the buses delivered and money had to roll back into fund balance and then come back out, and then all buses have been delivered that had been on back order or didn't deliver in time. But we are at that stage where this is about that time of the year where we're looking at our fund balance and trying to anticipate that capital expense. Food for thought, we did start off wanting to give our employees a 3% raise this year to get closer to that 3.2% cost of living that was established by the Social Security Administration... Well, 2.5 for 25, so I'm sorry. So we got close to it, but we didn't hit it, and we said maybe we could look at insurance premiums, you know, when that comes around. It's a pretty significant increase in the insurance premiums. Trying to do some quick math in my head, if we were to, say, purchase three buses this year and push that, you know, I don't know what the rate is, but let's just say 450 for that or wherever that hits. We're already on the hook for another 125, so 575, and then if we go to 185, you know, we're pushing up to three-quarters of a million coming off of the 6755. So maybe we can say we're going to be right around that $6 million figure in our fund balance at the end of, say, this year, not the fiscal year, but the calendar year. And I may be, obviously, be off a little bit there, but I'm just trying to ballpark it so we got an idea of where we would be. Which is still 3 million above where we like, where we call our threshold to be. And our threshold is still higher than what the state says we're supposed to be at. Because we don't have those exact figures and it's midnight Friday, are we capable of approving a percentage instead of a dollar figure when we know roughly what the percentage is? If we said we wanted to cover 80% of it, or if we wanted to do 100%, or does that make any sense?
She gave us figures for if you absorbed half, all of it, or half of it. So if you wanted to do that, I think that's the decision is just if you want, what you want to do, and then we go from there, looking at a budget amendment after you decide, you know, if it's...
And then we'll provide figures so we can have an accurate budget amendment to send to county commission.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to do all of it? Do we want to do half of it? Do we want to do 75%? I think we have a little room, but we're, I think we're getting close to where we want to start tightening the belt a little bit more.
If we absorb all of the cost, does that put us in a problem for the federal employees? Or can, are we still good with just pulling that out of the fund balance and paying that?
Well, it's going to increase special ed's maintenance of effort going forward. So, and we cannot do anything toward our food and nutrition staff because they're self-supportive. We can't contribute money to their fund.
Sure.
So when you think about if we absorb all of this and absorb the federal based on the special ed needs, the employees who fall under special ed and not title, and that's increasing the maintenance of effort, so next year we would have to make sure that that same amount is funded to that budget.
What would it look like if we went 75?
If we're using the 190 figure, because, again, we're not accurate, we'd be looking at 142?
Might be safer to estimate 150 because that could increase based on the employee information from the night.
If we go 75, we've gone an extra mile or so, but still trying to maintain some wiggle room, I guess you'd call it, maybe?
Yeah, I think the thing that we're on the hook for is the continuing of the servicing Yeah, I think the thing that we're on the hook for is the continuing of the surfacing of that once we've raised them. It's, it's, it's not necessarily raising the maintenance of effort for insurance premiums, but it's raising the budget to where we've gotta maintain that expenditure, that contribution.
Yes, sir.
Pay us one minute in the corner, maybe?
Yeah. So, you might could say, just for fluff, it's 200 if we do all of it, 150 if we do 75% of it, and 100 if we do half of it. And then we're gonna be on the hook for that going forward.
We're required to pay 45%, correct?
How much, no?
Now, we're required, we're under obligation to contribute to pay 45, I think that's right, to pay 45% of their premium.
But this is beyond.
This is beyond, yes, we've gone beyond that, cause we've absorbed it the past two years, for sure. So, and it's hard to say that we're paying a set percentage. We're meeting that requirement based on the state's regulation, but depending on the number of employees and what plan they have is how financial management puts that together. So, some people we may be paying a little more for than others, so it's not a set percentage for every employee. But at least we're meeting the 45%. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, because everybody chooses different policies.
Different plans, yes, yes.
That's why maybe a percentage approval tonight helps get us on the way to the correct budget amendment, to work towards the correct dollars. And again, remember, we are, you know, we, we are receiving less money into our fund balance because of how we have raised our maintenance of effort. So, our fund balance is growing slower right now, because we have put more money towards our recurring expenditures. And we did that to lessen the gap and to make our budget better balanced.
Is this gonna affect us doing any more remodeling on the schools later on down the road? It gonna hurt us? Year after year, being reoccurring?
It is, yes, yes. Without knowing exactly how much revenue is gonna change.
Correct.
And we can anticipate that. We are getting more sales tax revenue from the, from the local option sales tax. And now that we're almost out of that year being away from the city's contribution, we can say we're taking it all in on our own.
I'm so sorry.
So...
Emergency podcast, sorry.
So, good, all good.
I'm gonna, I've just heard of Mrs. Monks for a second too, but there still could be changes in our federal allocations as well. Because if you all remember, last year, we're given a set amount, and there's an allocation built into E-Plan for what our allocation is. But then in February, they came back and said, oh, we've made a mistake here, and we've gotta take 40-something thousand from you here, and 10,000 from you there. So, just keep that in mind as well, that the federal allocations, while they've been put in E-Plan, and we're basing our CFA on that consolidated funding application, which is titled "All Federal Money," that still could change again. We don't know what that looks like in the future. I don't wanna put negative in, but I think I'd be remiss not to mention it.
It's a reality, and it's something we have to take into consideration.
Like, we'd all like to do the mag, but then you gotta make sure you don't overextend yourself on the backside, too, so...
I think 50% would be a vote of confidence and, and, and allow, you know... I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna get to a point where we can't help. So, while we can, maybe try not to deplete our forward-moving ability.
You know what the acronym for local option sales tax is?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a game for us.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the, the splitting, I don't think that's unreasonable. I think it's, it's a step. It's, it's better than, than nothing, and we still have those funds to, to spend on, um, buses or whatever we need to.
Chairman, will make a motion, will you be?
Motion's made, then, for 50%, is there a second?
A second, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded that, um, the board will supply up to 50% of additional revenue to offset the insurance premium costs. Any discussion? Any disclaimers?
We'll support this, but my family will benefit, but I'm gonna vote for it, for the...
Also disclaimer, I also have a family member that will be affected.
I have two.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
No.
Uh, moving to budget amendment, um, Dr. Beard, um, we're gonna get this in for the budget, school and budget committee tomorrow. Uh, some extra money from public safety school grant. To go to equipment, maintenance. Equipment line item, is that right?
Yes, sir, it's allotted just for the public school safety grant, but it's put in a maintenance line item, because it's, it's usually involved, used, used to buy equipment.
And then, uh, hired a part-time speech pathologist?
Yes, sir, that's at the bottom. We were able to find a part-time speech pathologist in person rather than a contracted virtual, which needed an assistant as well to facilitate things. So, we're moving money from contracts with private agencies, which is where we always paid NHC for that, and moved it into the speech pathology salary line. So, that's saving us money, um, it's just a move, but because it crosses account codes, that would have to go to county court. And then the, the grant, uh, money, you know, anytime we amend for grants, we have to take that before county court as well. The pre-K is to align with the state, I don't know if Mrs. Sakowitz needs, you need to say anything? And then LEAPs, do you need to say anything about LEAPs? It's just, again, to align with the state, um, information. And then the CCEIS is part of the disproportionality, monitoring that the state has, so we have to take money from a federal line to put it in GP, and that is where we're moving some money from transfers to in-service staff development, so that we can get some training, um, to help with behavior situations within our district. So, none of this is from fund balance or new money. This is money being brought in from the public school security grant. We were allowed additional funding this year, and the rest of it is on alignment, and then we're moving money here, which saves us money in the long run.
Entertained a motion to approve this budget amendment?
Make a motion.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Uh, item R, uh, Richland School baseball resurfacing, this, uh, was a timely, so it needed to be discussed tonight, it wasn't in our work session, but to, uh, meet the dates and the cloaks, uh, Mr. Landers is here to talk about dirt.
I'm not an expert on dirt. Best, best that we know, it's been about five or six years since the surfaces on the baseball field have been, been addressed at all. I mean, Coach Sac come to me and said something about needing dirt, gonna look into dirt. Go ahead, you know, I'm thinking five, six, seven thousand dollars. I think I don't have the, the estimate in front of me, but I think it's about double that, or close. Oh, she's got it up there. A lot of that's labor, and he and I talked about it. This is a company out of Columbia, it's used pretty much regionally, colleges, uh, public facilities, school facilities, they, I mean, they're, they're, that's what they do. They, uh, come in and do it all, take the mound out, take the home plate out, all that gets lasered and lined back up and, and put back the way it is 100% supposed to be.
Dirt part, then beer, what you done that?
Dirt part, they take the old dirt out.
Brick dust and stuff, the grain is the...
The best, it's got everything in it, make it dry faster. It's just crazy, I mean, who would've, I would not have dreamed that would be the number. But, and talking to Dr. Beard, she felt like it's certainly conversation that we had out loud before we went off, that kind of dirt. But it is kinda timely, there, there's a waiting list. I mean, there, there's not a lot of companies, I did ask, well, um, do we need to look around and get estimates? Not necessarily bids, but certainly estimates. It's just, there's not a lot of them, I think the next closest one, don't quote me, one of them was out of Coleman. But, it, it's just who everybody uses, it's kinda like supply and demand, and it's, I think there was three other, two other companies aside from this one that, that, that do it in, in proximity that would make it vital or usable to us. But, this is just the one everybody uses, like, they have a great reputation. I actually think they've been in business longer, maybe by a different name, company sold out to a different company at some point. But if y'all have questions, I can ramble on as long as y'all want me to, but rather y'all ask me a question and see if I can answer it.
This would be coming from baseball funding, right?
Baseball raises their own money, they, I'm very proud of the coaches and their responsibility. Our, our baseball, football, basketball accounts are, are in really good shape. He can absorb this and still, and still be in good shape, it'll be far from broke.
We required to get multiple?
I wanna think it, just for matter of conversation, I think he's probably around 20, 21,000 dollars in his own account.
The reason it's brought before you really is because it's a purchase over 5,000. And when you think about the, I mean, it's the dirt, and it's some of these other things, but it's a single purchase of 5,000 dollars, our board policy says it must be approved by our board. So, that's the reason I told him I felt like it needed to come before you all. It's not asking for anything from us other than approval to spend their athletic fund for it. It would be an audit finding possibly, if we didn't bring it to the board, and we want things to be clean, so...
So, need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So, move it.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded to approve, is there any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a beautiful campus over there, too. I was there yesterday, I frequent it often, I'm, I'm very proud to see how you guys handle that. Wonderful campus, looks like you got all hands on deck there as well. Love watching your robot paint up lines, too, that's pretty cool. Uh, old business policy 6.312, use of wireless communication devices. Uh, as you guys remember, we talked about this in the work session, we needed to add some language in here to address these long trips, uh, athletic events, school-sponsored events that are beyond the school time and multiple hours. So, we added coaches, sponsors, administrators have discretion to allow students to have phones on or in use when students are on school events, field trips, athletic events, competitions, after the school day ends. That's the, cause we just approved this, but we wanted to make this our caveat.
I have to say, the data on the cell phones is improving across the United States.
This is the one this morning about the number of books that kids were checking out at the library as opposed to what it used to.
It's a large percentage, not just a little bit, a lot.
I'll make a motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry, V.
No, I, I was gonna say, I think for our minutes, we need a motion and approval on adding that, so thank you. Excuse me for interrupting.
Made and seconded, any additional discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Policy 6.303, questioning students and searches, again, this is one we recently, uh, approved, but we needed to add, um, a designee to fully update the policy. Um, something that came back from TSBA, and so, you know, pri, you know, not just refer to administrators, but a designee, uh, giving a little bit of, uh, leash on there, depending on the circumstance, male, female, um, relation, the whole, the whole nine yards. Entertained a motion to approve that. Quick change.
Second.
Made and seconded, is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Uh, we're under old business, I've, I kinda do this to you guys, just gonna give you a BMS renovation update, uh, just to keep us all in the loop. Our contingency there is still at 97,000, job savings of 70,000. Uh, so the new contingency is 167,193,18. We do have some, uh, punch list items that are still there. Strip and wax, uh, the flooring over the first available holiday to do that, that's gonna be for the corridors, the main offices and the cafeteria, that'll be to the tune of 4,439,61 cents. Uh, looking at then doing the classrooms this summer, because of, uh, moving around desks and chairs and all that, be hard to do in, in just a two-week holiday period or whatnot, and custodians can handle that. So, after that, we'll still have a remaining contingency of 162,753,57. Uh, I think we'll kinda let, let that lie for a second, see if there's any real significant need. Again, we've already referred to, we're looking at some, uh, fine-tuning some HVAC stuff with the reversing engineering and getting some answers on that. And, uh, Brenly and Wold HFR are working on that, so we're waiting on that. So, we're not ready to just move that money to the next project, but we're gonna see where we're at. And if these HVAC units are gonna have to be bought new and move along those lines without kind of engineering, uh, an oper, an option, we will need to utilize that money, uh, to dial those last few units in on that, on that back wing and a couple other, um, things that, that have come up. So, just wanna keep everybody in the loop, and, uh, that you know those talks are being had and discussed. We have no policies, or does anybody have any questions on that? I don't wanna... We have no policies for a first reading, uh, no policies for a second reading, but we do have public comment, uh, we have, is Amanda Osborne here?
I am, it's Osborne.
Osborne?
Yeah.
All right, if you'd like to stand up and address the board, uh, you have...
So, this is not a ref, and I've never done this before, but hi, I'm Amanda Osborne. Um, I have two boys that attend school in Giles County. One is 11, and he goes to Richland High School in sixth grade. My other one is three years old, and he attends Plasky Elementary and the pre-K developmental program. I have this whole long speech I was gonna say to you guys. I can save time and just ask what I'm gonna ask. Can you guys please use some of the budget to make sure that our special needs school buses have air conditioning? It's not a Tennessee state law that y'all approve it, but it is a Tennessee state law that they have heat in the winter, you know, and, no, I'm just gonna stop there, 'cause I'm gonna get into my speech if I don't. So, that's what I wanna ask before I get into my speech, if we could, if y'all wanna make it short. And there's many reasons for it, yeah.
You, you heard us allude to our budgetary constraints and our proposals, and that bus purchases, and that is coming up. So, we have one special ed bus that's left to be purchased, that they now come with AC and heat automatically on them.
Awesome.
So, going through the cycles of what we have done, whether we've bought three buses a year or five buses a year, trying to get caught up from all of those years, as you've maybe heard, where action wasn't taken, we are getting to that point. And, um, I can't speak for the board, but we will have a presentation sooner than later on the number of buses that we need to purchase. And I, I do not see why a special ed bus, the final one that needs AC would need to be, it would, would be purchased, we, we should be making that purchase.
So, but the issue is right now, there's buses with our children, you know, I'm just gonna do my speech.
You, just so you know, you have three and a half minutes.
Not a problem, I gotcha. I got you. Can I sit down and do this, 'cause I'm a little nervous?
You can, go for it.
Okay. At just seventy-five degrees outside, the temperature inside of a vehicle can rise over a hundred degrees in just thirty minutes. At ninety degrees, it can reach that point in five. Having the windows down don't help. The heat builds quickly and it builds dangerously. Now imagine a young child strapped into a five-point harness on a bus in that kind of heat. Children's bodies overheat faster than adults and they don't cool down as quickly. The harness, while it is safe, restricts airflow and traps heat. For children with special needs, this isn't just uncomfortable, it can be medically dangerous. Many of these students cannot recognize when they're overheating. Many can't say I'm too hot and I don't feel good. Many can't press a button for help. They sit silently in a hot bus overheating. So I wanna ask you, if it was ninety degrees outside, would any of you sit in a car for thirty minutes without air conditioning? You wouldn't. So why are we allowing our special need children to endure that? It's not just uncomfortable, it can be very, let me just go back to my speech, I'm gonna go off of it. During the first week of school, my son, Carter, the three-year-old that attends Plasky Elementary, he rode the bus from Plasky Elementary to Richland High School. That is a thirty-minute drive. And every single day when I met him, his body was red, he was weak, and he was lethargic. The aide had to literally pick him up out of his seat and hand him to me. He would not walk off the bus. I had to carry him limp and overheated. That's not just uncomfortable, that's dangerous. That's unacceptable. That's never happened last year when he rode the bus with AC. So, he was excited every single day when he got off the bus. He rode the bus for only four days this school year, four. I made the decision to remove him from the bus, not because I like driving two hours a day so he can attend school, but because it's common sense, it's the safe choice to make. This is a safety issue and it's about the well-being of our children, especially those that cannot advocate for themselves. The state of Tennessee does not require air conditioning on our buses. I understand that over a million dollars has recently been spent, been spent on purchasing school buses, yet some buses aren't even equipped with air conditioning. Giles County has the opportunity to lead, to say that even though the state doesn't require air conditioning on our school buses, that we will step up. We will be the district that refuses to let our most vulnerable students suffer because they deserve better, they deserve safety, they deserve comfort, and they deserve every ounce of our attention and care. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please pay attention to our agenda. It should be on the work, the next work session, this month's work session?
Eighteenth, yes, sir.
Eighteenth. We'd love for you to come back.
Okay.
During that time and, and be a part of that process and, and hear, hear how that process goes.
Okay.
And thank you for bringing this to our, our attention.
Thank you for listening. It's not, it's not bad. I haven't done it in a while.
Thank you, board comments. We are at that spot.
I'm still blown away by the artwork of the, of the students. I mean, that's, I thought maybe it'd be, that was high school artwork, but that's elementary school?
South side, yeah. Third, third, fifth grade.
That's, that's pretty amazing. I think Knox and Mary and Dr. Burr for stepping up and taking the roles that you did. Congratulations to the people, the teachers and staff that were recognized tonight by First National.
All right. Well, I mirror your comments as well, but I was so proud of the way our board showed up for our fall district meeting. Like, the, when you looked at the paper of boardsmanship awards that are not required, we're only required to do our education each year, which we fulfill those obligations. But what our board has done collectively, you know, we have multiple members that are level four, majority of our board is level three, we have level two, and we have level one. And that paper was filled with Giles County recognition. And I was so proud of our group because that, that shows not just our commitment to our board members in this room and our students and community in this room, but it shows that we are invested in our own education and, and being the best board members we can be. And I was very proud to be part of Giles County. You're up, sister. Good luck to you.
Ditto, ditto. I'll just say ditto. Congratulations to those that did, got recognized and our board members, I know y'all all, I'm gonna beat you, Scooter.
Go ahead.
But we did, at the, every, every one of us at the table was recog, except Mary, but she'd already beat us there. So everybody was recognized at the fall district meeting. So that was quite an honor for Giles County.
Some more than once.
Some got a lot of it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, first, I also, the, the artwork is, I've sat here and just looked at it and it is tremendous. And we might have some professional artists there someday, really, it's, I'm not, um, also the, um, meeting last night, I was very proud to be in Giles County. We had good participation and we went up and picked up certificates a few times. Of course, we had one person that wasn't there, but they got his, picked up his certificate every time his name was called. And I'm very proud of our board also. Your turn.
Well, I hate that I couldn't be there, but I was hauling youngins from UT Southern to soccer games on, on the bus. So, being, being involved in kids' life, that's given me another avenue to, to be bus driver, father, confessor, and cook. So, I enjoy doing it. But congratulations to everybody else that was, that was noted on this, on our certificates of achievement, pens, and that sort of thing. We've come a long way and I'd like to see us be able to get the Board of Distinction thing back that we at one time had years and years ago. And that'd be not just notoriety, but that's folks know that we're working together and, and not looking like we're not, but, and I understand what your youngster, youngsters like that, they can't, they can't make temperature changes like that. It's just, they're too small. And anytime we have something like that come along, we're, we're not going to ignore it. We're gonna do something about it. And money's always the, seems like the, the evil deal, but big bar is still, we're gonna make this happen and it, no youngin' should have to be involved in something where they're so uncomfortable they, they just are like that, 'cause that's dangerous.
Thank you.
As I, I know we're getting too hot, it's all about, did it in the hayfield about a couple of years ago. I ain't real sure I got over it. It took me, we got through on a Sunday and I still dehydrated on a Wednesday, so I know what that's all about and it's not helping. But we've got a, some great folks on this board and, and I wanna say, glad that Mary is gonna be the vice chair, and I was for a long time, but I wanted somebody else to be able to, to step in there and pitch for a while and, um, cause need some more folks case things. Go right or left, you always need somebody to fill in the hole. And just be careful what you wish for. But it's a, it's, it's a good thing to be there if Knox needs you or whatever, if he can't be here or whatever. And, and I wanna enjoy doing this legislative thing that you've been doing, 'cause I wanna know some more about what we're doing and what in our legislature and so I can let y'all know it's like Mary's doing. And so, thank y'all. Thank all the teachers and everybody and the kids for getting a good start this year and we're gonna hopefully keep going in the right direction and make sure that we're, we're better than we were last year. That's what you gotta hope to be.
I think you used my five minutes. No, I like to thank you for bringing that to our attention and that. And I'd like to thank this board, congratulations chairman, Ms. Mary, and you, Reggie.
You.
Yeah. And the artwork, I like, you know, First National Bank goes beyond recognize not only the teachers, but anybody employed in our school system. I think that's something we need to cherish in this community here, what they give back. Thank y'all for accepting my awards the other night, I would've been there. My wife don't wanna.
You pushed her in a hole.
She wanted to fool with a bull and she got hurt. But I keep up the good work, all of the teachers and administrators. Let's rock on 2026, be here for a notch.
You wanna that thing, you mess with the bull, you get the horn.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, ditto with everybody. Glad that we can meet and talk and work through these things, whether it's insurance premium or bus purchases or, or what it takes to keep this living, breathing dragon of our school system operating well and not making it fire off at us, that's for sure. Hope you survive your wife's ankle surgery.
Six months is like five years.
And looking forward to getting her back in financial management, too. She is a rock for, for us, as she is for a lot of the county government, so thank you for that. You guys reach out to us if you need us on stuff, we're always available, I would say. Board meeting is September eighth, work session, no, wait, what am I looking at?
Special, special.
Special call for our, yes, special call meeting Monday night for us. Work session is the eighteenth and then our board meeting will be October second. Anything else, Dr. Beard, do you have anything?
No, sir.
You want else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Any objections? Thank you all.